It is 4:00 PM. My name is Shane Blazer. I'm the chairman. Today is December 6th. Present, we have, I guess, why don't we start with Matt? Shane Blazer, Mayor.
Ryan Austin, District 1 Alderman.
Eric Daven, Commission Member.
Lee Tao, Commission Member.
Ben Goodrow, Commission Member on Zoom.
And any-
Jim Lucas, I'm Dark Tech. I'm Dark Tech for the Cashman Edition Project.
Thank you, Jim. Any other Commissioners online? Seeing none? We have Kyle Kearns, and if you want to introduce?
Yeah, so again, Kyle Kearns, Director of Community Development. I'd like to introduce the newest member of our team, who's already playing a significant role in our office, Carrie Edmondson. She joined us in the middle of November, and she serves as our Community Development Specialist and Associate Planner. So she will be assisting with Plan Commission requests, and she'll likely frequent the Plan Commission meetings and maybe providing comment on items moving forward. If you'd like to say hi, Carrie, you certainly can.
Hi, I look forward to working with all of you, and I'm glad to be at the City of Wisconsin Rapids.
Thank you, Carrie. We welcome you and look forward to working with you. Okay, on to item one, approval of the reports from the November 1st Plan Commission meeting. What are your wishes?
I'll move to approve. I'll second.
We have a motion by Austin, second by Daven. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And any opposed? That motion carries. We're on to item number two, which is Plan 21-1203, Consolidated Water Power Company Request to Alter Boundary Lines of a Nonconforming Lot to lessen the nonconformity at 2721 Fifth Avenue North, parcel ID is 3400447A and 3400310. Mr. Kearns?
Thank you, Mayor. So this item is similar to one that came before you a few months ago, previous item for Verso. In this case, it's Consolidated Water Power Company looking to expand their water quality substation, and it's an existing outlot or an existing lot that's nonconforming, and they want to expand or adjust the boundaries of that area to allow for future growth at this location for their substation. Anytime that there's a nonconforming lot that's being altered, Plan Commission shall take action and approve this. I do want to note that their action is after the fact. This has already occurred on the deed. It was something that with regards to Verso and other things that are happening with Consolidated Water Power, that they submitted several documents to us that we reviewed, and this was one outlier that we needed to correct and/or approve through Plan Commission to make it conform. With that, we recommend approval because it seems fitting with regards to the boundary alteration and that they are increasing the lot size to make it more conforming to the five-acre minimum.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions?
Mr. Chair, yes, I do have a question. It was unclear to me, Kyle, as to which way the ownership was going.
So when this document was originally created, I believe it was Verso who owned the outlot shown, and part of the expansion is then to convey Outlet 3 up on the board over to Consolidated Water Power.
So Consolidated Water Power will be the ultimate and final?
Correct, of the property shown above, yes.
Thank you.
Seeing none, what are your wishes?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Tao.
I'll second.
And a second by Austin to approve the request. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none? Do you have one?
Yeah, Kyle, this is basically encompassing the substation on this portion of the property. Is that a true statement?
Correct.
Okay, any other questions? Seeing none? All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. We're on to item three, which is Plan 21-1193, Assumption High School Request for a Sign Exception to Increase the Maxima Height for Proposed Ground Sign from 8 Feet to 10 Feet 3 Inches at 445 Chestnut Street, parcel ID 3408404. Kyle?
Thank you. So as indicated in the staff memo, we have a sign exception. This is our first under our new sign code, which was adopted in July, and essentially they're looking to increase the height of an institutional-type sign for the Assumption Catholic School of about 2 Feet 3 Inches. When we review the sign exception, we are looking at the standards of review, and in this case, those standards include situations where there's some sort of hardship or where there's a unique property characteristic or a site difficulty. As we've reviewed this, we have not identified any unique characteristic that would warrant a sign exception in this case, especially when we take it a step further. They have the ability to do a second freestanding sign, whether it's on another street frontage, or do wall signage as well. So with regards to being able to promote the school and increase the size for that reason, or to move the sign closer to the property line and maximize that five-foot setback, we feel as though also that there are other options that would exist in the if they were citing the ability to market and promote the use as reason to approve the sign variance. So with that being said, we are recommending to deny the variance, again, or the exception, again, just because we do not feel as though the standards of review are met in this case. I do want to note that the applicant is here, as well as, I believe, a representative from the sign contractor, and they may wish to speak further on the matter, as they have handed out a handout that I believe speaks to their request a little bit further. Thank you.
Does the Commission have any questions first? Go ahead.
I have a question for Kyle, and that is, although it doesn't really speak to the issue, it would appear from the documentation that this is to be some sort of a lighted sign, or there's a component of lighted sign in there. Is it a stationary lit message, or is this likely to turn out to be a moving sign?
So it's internally lit, and it includes an EMC, an Electronic Message Center, so it would have to follow the guidelines within the code regarding EMCs, Electronic Message Centers. And that would include, right, I think we regulate in the sign code, the displays time, I think we settled on two seconds, it was either two or one second, and there are a few other criteria that would have to be met when they pull a sign permit if this is approved. If this is not approved, they could still, you know, meet the standards, change the dimensions to eight feet, and then they would still have to come in and pull a sign permit and continue to meet those EMC standards. But this would be for that scrolling or that, the movement of text and imagery.
Is there any regulation with regard to lighted signs in residential neighborhoods?
We do have regulations on light intensity at the property line.
But they're permitted in a residential neighborhood?
I believe, yes, I believe they are, and I don't have the sign code in front of me to have the entirety of the standards, but I can look it up quick.
Kyle, would this sign have been permitted under our old code?
Yes, it would have.
Thank you.
And then is the eight feet, is that because of what their lot is zoned, or is that anywhere, like if someone wanted to put this sign on A Street, is that eight feet as well required?
The height is restricted because of the zoning district, because of its institutional nature of the district. We only allow an eight-foot-tall sign in that district. If they were to locate on 8th Street, that would be Zone B2, and they could have a 20-foot tall sign, freestanding sign. There is a difference in our code between Monument and, or ground and like a pole sign, however. If you're doing a ground sign like this, there are height regulations, and you'll have to forgive me, as it's a relatively new code, I don't know the code entirely at this point, and would have to reference it.
And that's why Lincoln High Schools can be as high as it is, because it's a pole sign versus, or no, that's a monument sign too, isn't it?
It's likely a legal nonconforming sign. Again, it was constructed prior-
Oh, under the old code.
And so we've adopted a new sign code in-
That's right.
-July of this year, so anything that existed prior-
Would be.
...may have shifted to a nonconforming status.
Okay.
Meaning that it can exist, they can swap out the cabinet, or they can swap out the face of the cabinet, but anytime they make a major change, they have to make the sign conforming.
Okay, thank you.
Do you know what the old height was in our old ordinance? Or I'm-
I do not. Something I can certainly look up.
I guess if, while we're, do we want to, go ahead, Susan.
For comparison purposes, if you look just directly across the street, there's a professional building across the street. I went to measure that one yesterday.
Is your microphone on?
Yes, it is.
Oh.
It is.
There, yeah, because it kind of gets directional if you get away from it.
The sign directly across the street is an eight-foot.
Okay, that's Rapid Orthodontist, and, okay. I guess, while Kyle's looking, do we, Earl, do you want to address the Commission? Do you have anything you want to add? Or the gentleman with you? Is your microphone on? Microphone on? Green button on the bottom.
Yeah, actually, we seen it up at Athens, and my wife is from Athens, and all the other schools, a lot of them are having it, and so for Memorial for Assumption, our two sons went to Assumption High School, and we're proud of the high school, and we did a lot of work over the last 10 years. We give a lot of scholarships, we did a lot of remodeling. That school is 56-years-old. If you had a 56-year-old car or a truck, it wouldn't look too good a shape. And so they've just got money to keep up the good school and study habits and everything. And so we decided that this year we did a lottery modeling inside of Assumption, and two years ago we put a new cafeteria and stuff in, so we want to do a memorial, and I think the school would be a real asset to the school, just like Assumption's gotten and everything else. There's nothing across the street, you know, and so how we started out is we went to Stratford Sign. I am from Stratford area, and so we went up and talked to Chris here, and then they drew up some plans, which took a couple of weeks to draft, draftsman, and so we thought, well, okay, it's expensive thing for the school, but for our living memorial or whatever, is what we wanted to do it. And so then we find out, I talked to Kyle, and he says, well, he could, Stratford Sign should send over email on, for the permit. So I didn't start out with the permit because I didn't know there was a change in the sign since July. Probably Stratford didn't know it neither. And so until you find out if you're going to do it, and then that's how it went about, and so I sure hope it gets approved because I'm not cutting down the center. If you're going to take two feet off, you take the two feet off the bottom and be sitting in the ground, the computer thing. If you take the top off, you can do the same thing. So I guess if it doesn't go through for this, I'll just skip the whole project, and then the city won't have it, and we're doing this for kids. It's a good place for alternative education for the Catholic schools, and so I'm hoping it gets approved tonight, just as it is, because if they had to go through redrafting and try to make it smaller, then you can't see it from the street, and so that's a lot more time, and we'd like to get this done, because the weather and so, I appreciate if we get any else hold on this night. And actually, Chris could give you some more information.
Hi, Chris Jackson, Stratford Sign. Stratford Sign, we respect ordinances to the fullest, and we usually don't ever fight back. And with that said, we did not have any intention of making a grossly large sign or anything that's overly big. In fact, we take pride in part of our role being to suggest what works best for people. And so with that said, the size of the sign is what we really do feel is going to work best, and it's a two-part sign. It's only one-sided, so part of our intention was to have it set back enough to where it still looked good, and then also the back of the sign is being designed to have lighting to go up on that flagpole. So if we move it away, that'll take away from that aspect as well. And he is right as far as the base, the base is 30 inches. We live in Wisconsin, we have snow, it's in the middle of the grass, it's going to get covered, so that's going to take away part of it. And then the EMC is only 27 inches high, so once we start taking that down, you're really limiting what you could put on there. And another point I'd like to make too is that, you know, this isn't for a national brand that's trying to get you to buy a slushy. This is for something in your community, something for the school, for the kids. I'm happy to answer any questions. I did, Earl doesn't know this, but I did get with the owner of the company, tried to have a backup plan on what we could do to resize it to fit within that eight feet, and we would have to drastically change it as far as making that work.
I have a question for you.
Yeah.
You said it was only going to be one side. Is the plan, is it going to be straight to the road or at an angle more, so?
Parallel with the road.
Okay.
Just a few feet in front of the flagpole, so like I said, we can put up lighting on that.
So it wouldn't be more for traffic going by, it would be more for people walking up?
You'd have to drive by and look at it, or be walking down the sidewalk.
Okay, so if you're driving down the road, you can't see it unless you pass it, look to your-
Yeah.
So if you took anything off the bottom, you'd be taken off the line, which is another mascot for them, and if you took off the top, you'd be taken off the reason Royal, and if you cut the balance of Assumption Catholic Schools down, the letters would have to be smaller, and from 40 feet away, it would look, it'd be hard to read too. And so that's the reason that we really hope to get a variance on it to keep the sign at that size, which is ready, drawn and ready to go into production. And electricals there, ready to, and actually, the sign is 11 foot 6 wide, now in each corner, there would be a floodlight shining up to the flag, which now the flag don't have a light on it, because they're on the building, they're burnt out, and they've been burnt out for years, you know? So this would be, go on at the same time as the light comes on. Oops, it's got to be. And they would light up the flag, and I think it would look very nice. So, any other questions?
Susan?
I guess I have one question, and that is, I don't see anyone here representing the high school.
I can't hear you.
Having lived here a long time, the sign that I see here doesn't represent the graphics that are the graphic-
I'm sorry, I can't.
...design that the school itself uses.
I got hearing aids, and so I guess I, I'm not hearing anything you say.
I am sorry. I said, I don't see anyone here representing the school itself, and the other question that just occurs to me is that the graphics on the sign don't comport with the graphic standards that I'm used to seeing associated with Assumption High School.
Well, the reason nobody's here from Assumption High School is because already a sign there that is okay with the school, and the school's, there's a form, a sign and a packet that you got from the city. Dan Minter signed it, and he's the president of the Catholic schools.
All right, thank you.
And if I may, the marketing director over at the school has also been in contact with me to make sure that we're using the blue that they want, and the logos aren't conforming to what they would like to have represented. Thank you.
I guess I personally, I'm trying, I go across the street all the time, take my kid to the orthodontist, and, you know, I don't think that two feet in my mind is that big of a deal. Obviously, I know it's the code, but, you know, I agree, I think the sign looks nice, you know, but it's hard to picture what it'll actually look like if it's upstanding in front of the building, but I do agree that you can't lap off two feet off the bottom, and how do you proportionally do it? You know, the only thing you could adjust is the top part, so I personally don't have a problem with, or an issue with the sign, and I'm going to vote in favor of it, just where I'm at. Matter of fact, I'll get things kicked off, I'll make a motion that we approve the sign exception to increase the maximum height from eight feet to 10 feet 3 inches for 445 I think either way, if you're in favor of it or not in favor, we still need to make a motion in the positive, so I guess that's also my motion, because it's in the positive. If you're not in favor, you still need, we still need a positive motion.
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Kyle.
Again, just from a concern standpoint that I have, if, right, if we do grant this, then we could arguably be setting precedent for future requests, given this is our first sign exception that could be granted, our first request under the new sign code. So I would ask that if this is granted, that there be, provided some reasoning so that we can create separation among any future requests that come in, rather than just, right, kind of subjectively approving the sign, because, right, the staff report, we've indicated that we don't feel as though there are site difficulties or anything unique with regards to the requests, and are recommending denial, so I would just, again, ask for some reasoning. The other note that I wanted to make is that the former sign ordinance didn't include institutional-type districts within the ordinance. However, generally throughout the old sign code, a 12-square-foot ground size, ground sign was the maximum size within the sign code in multiple districts. And then in the existing sign code, we do have, again, the extensive section on general standards for electronic message centers, and you can see here with regards to the lighting that I think was questioned earlier, that they not exceed different foot candles depending on measurement and the location of the sign on the property. So, again, these extensive standards, even if the sign is approved, would still have to be met as part of the EMC regulations.
I guess my reasoning for it would be institutional, nonprofit, and I don't know how you can make it, you know, lapping off two feet on it doesn't make sense. And I just think it'll look nice, bottom line.
So Kyle, at this time, is this, is this sign meeting those specifications?
As of right now, yeah, it meets the sign size, but with regards to the light, you know, the way text is displayed, typically when we issue a sign permit, we'll copy and paste, that's the section that I referenced earlier, as a condition of the approval of the sign permit. So when we give them the sign permit, they understand what conditions have to be met. And then if we get complaints on, let's say, the light trespass at the property line or flashing or scrolling, you know, really fast, that wouldn't meet the requirement, we would go out and we would verify, and if there's a violation, we would issue a violation order and potential citation.
I have a question for Kyle. Kyle, I know you've worked with other submissions in the past for stuff like this, or any type of building thing. What has the applicant done in preparation for the submission for our meeting tonight in working with your department on this and adherent to the code up to this point?
So the applicant, I believe Earl first contacted me, questioned whether or not they could do a sign. Details of the sign weren't shared in depth during that phone conversation, and after then Stratford provided a sign rendering in application to our office, it was identified that the sign exceeded the height requirement, so we followed up with an email that indicated that it doesn't meet the requirement. However, they can pursue a sign exception, and then I believe I had another phone conversation with Earl outlining the sign exception process, and then Stratford representing the applicant then quickly put together an application, submitted it to our office, and it was added last minute to the agenda so that we could review it here in a timely manner before, hopefully, the ground is fully frozen and they can't, they can't install the sign this year. So that is essentially the history with regards to my working with both Stratford and the applicant.
Okay, thanks.
I think I just, maybe some comments. I agree that it's a nice-looking sign, and it would be added, but I think maybe more to Kyle's point about the, we have the codes and to open ourselves up for other places that wouldn't be conforming to it, and knowing that the sign is going to be parallel to the road, I think that maybe shows that it could maybe be smaller because you're not trying to pull traffic from, or get messages out to traffic going by. People walking up already know why they're there, what they're there for. So I guess I would just follow the ordinance that we have.
Any questions, further comments? Go ahead.
Kyle, you said that before July, the height requirement would have been 12 feet? Is that what I got from that?
So the, the sign code didn't adequately identify institutional districts, and the reason it didn't is because our zoning code changed in 2018, and then was amended in 2019, and immediately following the zoning code, the sign code started to be rewritten because the sign code references the zoning districts within the zoning code. Because of a change in our office and staffing and other priorities, we didn't amend the sign code until this July, but the previous sign code didn't actually identify institutional districts. But within other districts, and I can pull up the old code, even in like a residential district, you could have, I believe, a 12-foot ground sign if you had like a unique use, you know, every property couldn't have a 12-foot ground sign, but in those districts, in the B1 Downtown District, the maximum height was 12 feet for a ground sign. You could have a higher pole sign, but a ground sign, again, as previously defined in the code, was 12 feet maximum.
Do you think this will become, is this a rare circumstance with Assumption Catholic Schools being in the residential environment that it's in or area, that we would have to worry about everybody else coming in and saying, I want a sign just like Assumption's sign, or do you think this is a little bit more of a one-off?
I think that it may be slightly different, and I don't necessarily disagree that we need to limit the sign height to 10 feet, but I think we need to be consistent with the code. If Plan Commission and ultimately Council determined that they wanted to permit 10-foot-tall signs in institutional district- 10-foot-tall signs in institutional districts, then we should do a sign code amendment to clarify and change eight feet to 10 feet rather than an exception. You know, personally, I don't see a huge difference between eight to 10, if it's a ground sign that's not in the vision triangle, that's not, you know, detrimental to the surrounding property owners. But right now, our sign code says eight feet is the max. So the only other course of action is the sign exception right now. I think it's a little different just because it's zoned institutional, but my bigger fear would be businesses on Eighth Street that now come in and say, "Hey, you know, my neighbors to the south and to the north have a 30-foot-tall sign, which would be nonconforming. It may have existed prior to the code, and now because of that and because of maybe this approval, they are claiming that they should also be granted a sign exception so that they can more so match the other signs along the corridor."
And I even think that's, you kind of bring it up, though, because there's no sign to match here versus on A Street, you know, this is the code now, but we're not matching signs here. You kind of outlined some of the reasons why I think it should be, you know, it's not in the vision triangle. You know, the EMC part of it is probably what's putting that extra two feet, because if that wasn't in there, then this sign would probably be easily within that eight foot. However, as a high school, and every time I drive by Lincoln High School, I like to see the EMC to find out what's going on, what events are being, being held at the school. And now this is an opportunity for Assumption to be able to have that too, to be able to highlight what they're doing in their schools. So, yeah, I think it will look strange taking two feet off the Assumption Catholic Schools part, and it'd look kind of disproportionate in my eyes. And so that's why I speak in favor of it.
Just for the record, too, I want to express my appreciation to Mr. Earl Haves for the work you did through, Haves, sorry, Mr. Haves, for the work you've done throughout your entire life to be able to afford the ability to donate to the Assumption Catholic School system the way you are, and the work that you do every day, hands-on, still doing what you do. Very much appreciated from the community. I hope this works out, you know, in everybody's best interest for the school, most of all, and the kids, as you have said, also for the work that you're putting into it. So thank you for that.
I, I think I'd just like to, I'd be more in favor at this point of amending our sign code to a 10-foot ground sign than, than to approving this special exception. I think, looking at this sign and the design with an EMC, I think this could be a common problem with ground signs moving forward here within the city. So a ground sign that wanted to incorporate an EMC potentially might need just that extra two feet. And if Mr. Kearns is saying that that extra two feet isn't a big deal to him, it's just a restriction of what our current code is saying, again, I think maybe we need to look at amending our current sign going to 10 feet in height than, than what it is now with the eight feet.
Mr. Commissioner, was that Mr. Austin speaking?
Yes.
I, I want to echo his belief there as well, or his thoughts. And I think it might just get us in a precarious spot of, you know, approving one here. And I guess, subjectively, I enjoy the look of the sign. I think it's very reasonable. It would do the high school very well for communicating, you know, the messaging as well as the look is very tasteful. Stratford Signs did a great job. But, yeah, I do worry about this getting us into a spot where, in this case, Assumption High School doesn't appear, as Kyle indicated, to have any hardships with, you know, the sign placement, the height and everything else to adjust it. And, you know, out of our goodwill and our subjective nature of approving that, it might get us into a spot where so too someone else comes with a subjective feeling that, you know, they too don't have a hardship, yet we deny it for whatever reason. And then it puts us in a spot where we, we create some inequity. So I also agree with Mr. Austin in possibly amending our code for ground signs then.
Thank you, Ben. So Mr. Austin was asking about, how would we go about amending, Kyle?
So an amendment to the sign code, I don't believe would need a public hearing notice. Zoning code would. I don't think sign code would. I think I'd probably recommend one anyways, just because it's a official code of the city. But we could, we could potentially hold a special meeting, I think, this month. Otherwise, it'd be easy to do in January. But again, that would push the applicant back to possibly not installing the sign this year.
I guess that was giving me my question. When was the plan or hopes to install? Earl, when, or Chris, either one of you, when was the hopes to have this? Is this a spring project that we're working on?
Well, it was multi-step. We wanted to get the power, the foundations ran sooner than later. And then the message center, the company we work out of Detroit, they're just like everyone else in the world right now. They're out eight, 10 weeks. And what we needed to do is before we order it, is get approval from you guys. And then once we get that, then we kind of build the sign around it. But initially, our plan with timeline was early spring. May 1st is the deadline you gave us?
The deadline was February 1st when we were in Alabama.
Yeah, February 1st, I'm sorry.
February 1st. But you gotta change the ordinance. Can't you pass this tonight and change the ordinance? I mean, that's what I would appreciate, if there's a possibility of taking a vote tonight and passing it. Otherwise, I guess I'll just spend my money someplace else. You know, I'm not sure. I thought tonight we could get it done, because now it was canceled already for three weeks. The electric was in already, and we dug that in because it was, the only way to get it in is before the frost, so they put it in last Saturday, I guess. Current technologies, and so, I mean, everything is backing up, and I'd like to get it in as soon as possible. I mean, I'm 85. I want to get things done. I want to get my budget for what I want to do with Assumption for next year, or anyplace else where they see and the other places, you know? You get, you live day by day, but I want to, I want to know now what I have to put in the budget for the donor, my donor fund, where I can do these projects. I got to do that by the first, first of the year. So that's why I'm just, just giving you the point of, if I want to do projects in the city, which will improve the city, you know? I'm a landlord in the city for 62 years. I love it. I don't find many people saying that. So, I know my wife would be real disappointed if it doesn't get passed now. We got to wait for some other meeting, and maybe they won't change it from, at that point either. There'd be questions, and then they'll go back to eight. And I'm not, I'm not going to spend more money to try and make it smaller and not be good. I don't do anything half. I want it, I want things looking nice. And at that distance, being 40 feet from the road, you start taking that Assumption Catholic Schools down, the sign, if you can't read it, you might not have it. The same thing with the, you know, like tonight is their Christmas program. It would be unruly thing, you know? And their masses and all that. So if the city can't pass it tonight, is what I, I'm sure hoping they could. And then their next meeting changes to 10 feet or whatever you want to do, that's fine. But I don't know how many people are going to come in, in that location where you can, you know, you can say yes or no to them too, you know? So I guess we'd both be disappointed if things could be delayed again. So, I was hoping it would get passed tonight, because I got half the payment down to them already. That's a lot of dollars. And so, we'd like to get the project going and get it done. So, okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Go ahead, Susan.
Mr. Haves, I can empathize with your, your desire to move the project forward in a timely manner. Our organization has also had some difficulties with working through the city's system for doing various things, and we've met with disappointment also. I hope you could understand that the city does really need to work with a set of rules and be consistent and fair with everybody in the application of those rules. And it really doesn't have so much to do with the merit of the project or anything of that sort, but rather working through the system in a way that is equitable for everybody.
We didn't know the ordinance changed. And actually, it took a while before it did get changed before it passed on. It was just passed July. So I hope you see it wasn't, wasn't that we, it was bypassing the permit situation. We didn't know that the permit was changed from down to eight feet. So, okay, thank you.
Any further questions or comments? Anything further, Ben?
No, I appreciate the individual that's at the meeting as well. And, you know, if anything else, I think we can appreciate something unique that you proposed to us, and we're going to do everything we can, not only do accommodate you, but everybody for the city as well. We have everybody's interest to look forward to. And, yeah, if anything else, this should feel unique in the sense that we're going to take this, you know, into consideration into our entire, into our entire code, not just this exception.
Thank you, Ben. So we do have a motion on the floor to approve the exception. So I guess if there's no further discussion, everybody who's in favor, say aye. I say aye.
Did you have a second, Mayor?
Yes.
Lee, okay. Thank you. Sorry to interrupt.
That's okay. And then all who are against, say nay.
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 So that motion failed. Go ahead.
Because we have some nays, I want to make sure we get it corrected.
You want to do a roll call?
Correct, yes. So if we could do a roll call, that would be great. Thank you.
So I, I think I, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm the only one that voted in support. So the rest are nays. Anything further? Okay.
Can we be sure to get the amendment to the side code on the agenda for next, next month's meeting?
Yes. And the sign code, I think, was slated for an amendment on another matter anyway. So yes, we'll, we'll be coming forward in likely January with a few amendments for the sign code.
Thank you.
And I, and I guess further, I kind of struggle with, you know, sign codes and those type of things, because you really don't know when these codes are presented, and they have numbers and heights and distances, that you really don't realize how much of an effect they can have until you're actually presented something that you can have a sign with a certain size on a large building like this, where you have a sign sitting in front of a larger building, to really realize and see the ramifications. And that's my struggle with, you know, some of our codes, that, yeah, we pass them, but you really don't have a perspective on it because it's not visual. That's just my thoughts. So moving on to item four is Plan 21-1185. Teresa Cashman, out-of-the-box coffee house request for a site plan review for an expansion of an existing cafe at 3820 A Street South, parcel ID 3413806. Kyle?
Thank you. This is the, I think, the third or fourth time this is before you, which is, I think, a good thing, because we have an example here of a very successful business on Eighth Street that is so successful, they're already looking to expand. And that expansion, as indicated in the, the staff memo, is to the outdoor patio area with an enclosed seating area and rooftop seating above that seating area. It's about a 500-square-foot area, I'm sorry, just over 400 square feet. And when we look at the standards of review for site plans, the, the one thing that I think staff is questioning is the landscaping. So currently, they have some building foundation landscaping and planters in this area, which will have to be relocated and identified. And then there's some, there's also some, some additional trees along the street frontage that need to be included as well. So we've added those as conditions of approval. We feel as though it is fitting. The parking standards are still met, as indicated, and actually, they're exceeded within the site plan, the existing site plan. So really, the only changes that are proposed are to the building area or footprint, and not necessarily the parking or the, the drive aisle or parking lot aisles in this case. So with that, we would, we would recommend approval as well as the five conditions outlined on page one of the staff report. Thank you.
Commission? Go ahead, Susan.
Kyle, this was a, this was a plan that we've reviewed several times. And I think that not too long ago, a couple of months ago, we had a request from Subway right next door. And at that point, I had asked you with regard to how you get an occupancy permit when the, the applicant is not in compliance with various conditions that are specified ahead of time. I've, I guess I've, I'm a little bit distressed by the idea that there's a storage container out there that is inappropriate and probably not allowed. There is a violation on the side lot, the north side lot, between the two properties in question. There's no lighting plan, and the, the grease container or the garbage disposal equipment is not enclosed, and there's no fencing as a buffer line with the residential property to the back. All that being said, I took a look at the plans that are in here, and it would appear that the, if I were to look at the loading or the safety requirements for putting dining up on the roof, probably the loading on that rafters there are not suitable at the present time for that kind of addition. And I'm wondering how we can gain compliance here prior to allowing more things to happen.
So with regards to some of the questions, I don't know exactly when we granted final occupancy. I think it might have been in the fall of 2020. And so landscaping at that point, I don't think was installed because of the availability of plants as well as the, the season. And I think it was installed in the spring of 2021. And Jim, the applicant and architect that did the site plan, could also speak to this in terms of the timing. But we frequently, with different projects, will grant occupancy as part of the occupancy. We add the, the site conditions as conditions that still have to be met. We still have, aside from the occupancy of a building, we still have the legality to, to cite zoning violations. If there's a landscaping violation or a parking lot violation for conditions that haven't been approved, we can issue an order and potential citations every day that it goes, you know, that it exists. In this case, again, with the new construction of a project and with all the changes that have occurred over time, we have allowed some flexibility for the applicant first to meet the city's requirement and we have allowed some flexibility for the applicant first to meet the city's requirement and make those changes. And, for example, one was the building foundation. Staff identified that it was minor for them to do some planters for the building foundation rather than the in-the-ground plantings. And I think it looks very well. The planters that they installed, I think, were very costly and create some privacy to those in the exterior area, but I think were appropriate and something that changed from the original approval. But again, given the condition that allows staff to approve minor changes, we thought it was appropriate for us to make that approval. In regards to the other items, we've brought the dumpster enclosure that's non-existent to their attention. They did, on one of the previous approvals, submit a dumpster enclosure plan. And I did pull that and make that part of the packet on page 39 of 53. They would still need to meet that requirement. And we can be a little more aggressive in terms of, you know, withholding the occupancy of the addition until such dumpster corral is created. We can do the same for the landscaping, for the building foundation, as well as for the street frontage trees that need to be added. And then with regards to the storage container on site, I brought that to the attention of the applicant. If they are starting the construction project, if it gets approved tonight and we issue a building permit, they would be allowed to have construction-type trailers on site, but they cannot have a permanent accessory structure such as that on the site. So they would have to, you know, construct, you know, typical accessory structure. They can't use a storage unit for that. All of that's been brought to the attention of the applicant, who, again, can probably speak further to some of those items at some point as well. Did that answer most of the questions? Did I miss something?
Well, I guess the one situation that I see, and again, it's sort of the same thing that's happened with Mr. Haves here, and that is that you're equitable to everybody involved. And as I think about the projects that we've addressed, working our way down Eighth Street, we did something for the cable television people, we did something for Conexus, we reviewed a Caribou Coffee location, we approved a Qdoba. And all of those approvals came in with a set of documentation that was complete and adhered to the current standards. And I think it's only reasonable to ask these people to do the same or to adhere to the same standards. And since it's been a year since this came through, it would seem an appropriate time to make that happen.
Thank you.
Kyle, can I add to some of that?
Yes, I was going to ask Jim if he had anything to do with, like, thoughts on the truss load and some of those questions.
Sure. First of all, the planters that are there now are going to remain there. This is, design is a three-season porch, a three-season enclosure. The intent was to minimize the things that we had to take away from what's there now. So we use pure foundations and not excavates for strip footing, number one. So the planters will remain. You know, the trees out at A Street, you can make that a contingency. I don't think that should hold anything up. The temporary stuff in the back is because she does have a growing business. As Kyle mentioned, her business is firekeeping her original business plan. I think everybody should be commended for that, the city for supporting her and her for doing this. Parking's the same, toilets are the same, exiting's the same. And as far as the structure goes, I've been practicing architecture for 30 years. So I know how to design a roof structure, whether it's for, you know, a commercial project, a residential project, a warehouse or any of those things. I routinely design those things according to state codes and never had any issue with any of those things. As far as the lighting plan goes, there is no site lighting proposed. So I'm not sure what, you know, what we can do. You know, she's got those twinkle lights out there, is that something you want on a site plan? You know, and the drawing set was complete when it was approved. The owner simply hasn't gotten around to, as a matter of running her business, hasn't gotten to enclosing the dumpster. And those things are, I'm not saying they're not important. What I'm hoping is that they're not sufficient to delay this.
Anybody have any other questions or comments for Jim?
Jim, this is Susan. The drawing that I saw with regard to the loading on the area that you're expecting to use as upstairs dining or rooftop dining showed a pounds-per-square-foot measurement that was more like 30 or 50 pounds rather than probably what the state would require on a commercial structure of about 100. Is this drawing an old drawing? Do you have a state-stamped plan?
No, this project will be approved locally, not by the state of Wisconsin. And second-floor loading is, I have to go grab my code book. I'd be happy to cite that section and submit that information as an amendment to the drawing to make sure that all the commissioners are aware and satisfied that the design is, in fact, in compliance with all the loads, both lateral and vertical.
Thank you, Jim. Eric, did you have something you wanted to say? Okay. Any further questions or comments? Not, what are your wishes?
I'll make a motion to approve Plan 21-1185 with the staff recommendations as outlined.
Thank you, Eric, and I'll second that motion. Any further discussions? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Anybody oppose? That motion carries. We are on to number five, Plan 21-1176. Kyle Stern, a public hearing in action on a request for a conditional use permit to renovate the building into a mixed-use housing at 1551 West Grand Avenue, parcel ID 3402369. I guess in the past, why don't we have Kyle introduce the item? We'll open a public hearing, then commission can have a discussion after the fact. Kyle?
Thank you, and I also believe the applicant is available on Zoom for comment in the future also. So we have a request here for the conditional use. As the mayor indicated, the use is a little unique in that it's mixed-use housing, meaning that there'll be an office component as well as residential dwelling unit component with four apartments within the building. This is a vacant building that's a little unique in that it has very limited parking and the majority of the property is the building, right? So it's an extremely large building on a smaller lot. It's been vacant for some time, I think it was previously some retail uses. There's some other uniqueness in that the asphalt extends into the right-of-way and parking has previously occurred within the right-of-way. And you'll see this, and I think it was identified within the staff report. From a overall use and review standpoint, there aren't too many exterior changes that are proposed to both the building as well as the site. However, there are a few things that I do want to note, one of which is the parking component. So typically, a dwelling unit, a mixed-use housing dwelling unit will require two parking stalls per dwelling unit. However, there is a section of the ordinance, the parking ordinance, that does allow plan commission to permit a reduced amount of parking where appropriate. So along with the conditional use approval, the applicant is requesting a reduction of two parking stalls, primarily due to the one-bedroom and studio-bedroom apartment that exists. They don't feel as though they'll have occupants that have multiple vehicles within those two units. So again, they are requesting a reduction of two from nine parking stalls required down to seven. With that being said, I think they could easily fit four parking stalls off the alley on site. Potentially, they could also get some parking stalls, some parallel stalls along the west side of the building as long as that existing asphalt remains. However, because that existing asphalt is within the right-of-way, a majority of it is, when the asphalt is reconstructed, it'll have to meet the code. And the engineering department likely is not going to permit the construction of that asphalt or reconstruction of that asphalt in the right-of-way moving forward. So in partnership with the school district, the applicant has asked if they can do a shared parking agreement with the school district in the Mead School lot to the southwest. And I talked to Craig, the superintendent, who confirmed that they are willing to enter into an agreement for three parking stalls, possibly more for that lot, which would then bring up the total to either seven or beyond, depending on those parallel stalls located on site. So again, the other interesting component is the office component. So in order to do this residential, primarily residential use, they need to have an office component on site. The code does not regulate how much of the building has to be office. They just have to provide that office component. So you'll see on the screen in the center of the building, they do have that office suite. It's a small office suite with a bathroom and a mechanical room identified. And that use will also require, I believe it'll be one stall for the commercial area of the building. I think staff generally think this is a fitting use for the building. I think it meets a need of kind of that workforce housing. I think, when you think about other uses for this facility, I think it'll be significantly limited because it probably would not meet the retail or restaurant parking ratios that would be required because of the limited parking on site. So I think this is, you know, what's considered an adaptive reuse of an existing facility. And we would recommend approval with the conditions that, again, they secure that shared parking agreement. I believe we've also included as a condition that reduced parking ratio from nine down to seven and that if they do exterior trash containers, that they either use the city's garbage carts or they screen appropriately as the code requires any refuse storage. And I think we're also recommending limiting commercial delivery and operations for the commercial component of the use. And then we have a few other, right, conditions that they obtain all applicable city permits and that we have the ability to approve minor modifications to the plan. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. So let's go into the public hearing portion. So the first, we'll, at 5:04 PM, we will open up the public hearing for anybody that wishes to speak against the project. And for a second time, does anybody wish to speak against the project? And for a last time, does anybody wish to speak against the project? Seeing none, I'll call three times if anybody wishes to speak in favor of the project. For a second time, does anybody wish to speak in favor of the project? And lastly, is there anybody that wishes to speak in favor of the project? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing at 5:05 PM and turn it over to the commission. Any questions, comments, or what are your wishes?
I had a couple, Kyle. You said the office, they're just including that because the code requires it? Or do they feel that they wanted to have that in there?
So the only housing that's permitted in the B2 commercial district is this mixed-use housing via conditional use permit. If you read the definition, and I believe it was included in the staff report, it states that you have to have a commercial component in order to do the housing. It doesn't identify how much of a commercial component. It doesn't say if it's retail or office, just that there's a commercial component. And we would recognize an office-type use as that commercial component.
And then with the parking in the right-of-way, so if the street was redone or they would redo the asphalt, most likely that would all have to be curbed then? How would the, would they not be able to park if they're all parking? Would they all have to park in order and then everyone has to back out? Or would that cause a problem?
So I think if they were to reconstruct the parking lot, the curb for the street would likely remain where it is. But I think the engineering department would likely require a boulevard or some sort of stop to prevent vehicles to continue to park within that area, right? Generally, if you have something that's non-conforming and you rip it out, you can't replace that non-conforming infrastructure. In this case, the parking lot is existing in the right-of-way and that's an improvement that typically the engineering department would not permit. So I think, right, if they have parallel stalls along the west side of the building, it would be very difficult to access those parallel stalls if and when that reconstruction occurs. So that's why I recommended that they maybe pursue some off-site parking with the school district to protect themselves so that when and if, down the line, they do those repairs to the asphalt, they can still park up to four vehicles off the alleyway. And then they've got another three in the school district lot, which is meeting the minimum of seven if the exception is granted.
And that was part of my next question with the school agreement. Say they come into an agreement and, you know, in five years, the school says they want to do something in that lot and they don't have that agreement anymore, does that come back to your office? Or how does, you know, they could have the agreement for one day and then it's gone and then we wouldn't know about that?
So part of the reason we added as a condition is because we'd like to see something in perpetuity or a Plan B if they're not able to utilize, let's say, the district changes and 20 years from now, that parking lot is not available, that there's something else in place that would allow for them to find parking elsewhere, whether on another school lot or potentially, you know, an off-site location that then the property owner would be responsible for. Very similar to what we did for Conexus, right? Conexus had the off-site parking lot across the street, both owned by Conexus. That wasn't to meet the minimum requirements, but I think we'd want to see some sort of, you know, additional language in that agreement with the school district that identifies that.
Well, no, there's no side to this property which meets the setback requirements. There's also no landscaping on the property. There's also no unit that, as far as I could tell from the drawings, meets the mixed-use, I think it's an 800-square-foot apartment size and something like a 20,000-square-foot lot for that number of units. Am I wrong in that or have I calculated that?
So what, I guess, what section of the ordinance are you referencing for that section?
I'm not, I don't know a section of the ordinance. I just, I believe that mixed-use requires a larger lot, that the units need to have a certain square footage. That's my recollection from some of the other projects we've looked at. That building sits almost on the lot line. It's got to be within three feet of the back lot line. And the alleyway. And the alleyway, I I really can't see that you can put dumpsters there and still park four cars there without interfering with the alley. So in in terms of almost every aspect of the project, although it would be really nice to have some moderate-priced housing, almost every aspect of this interferes with every aspect of our code. Just a comment.
Okay. So with regards to minimum lot size requirements, we do have requirements in our multifamily districts. So that's the R-three and R-five district. We also have minimum lot size requirements for our other districts. Uh, for example, if you're doing a multifamily apartment complex in the R-three district, you need like three thousand or thirty-five hundred square feet per unit with new construction in those districts. We do not identify a multifamily minimum lot size requirement in our B-two commercial district or our B-one district or our B-three and B-five districts. Um, I think the reason being is because the housing, the only housing that's permitted is this mixed-use type housing. And so it allows plan commission to determine whether or not they feel as though the lot configuration, the the existing building in many instances, um, you know, the general areas appropriate for a mixed-use housing. Uh, so for example, we approved mixed-use housing downtown at the Kissinger Law Office very recently. Uh, that was for a second-floor apartment. And that's, I think, ideally why mixed-use housing was created so that it would permit the the first-floor commercial and second-floor residential in the downtown, the denser areas of the community. So in this case, if you were to construct a new um, commercial use, you typically would need ten thousand square feet for a commercial use within the B-two district. However, when you have an existing non-conforming building, the section that talks about non-conforming uses and non-conforming lots and buildings does permit another permitted use or conditional use within that district to exist on an existing lot of record within an existing building. Now, you also have to, though, in addition to that, meet the parking requirements, the landscaping requirements, the lighting requirements, and things of that nature. However, when looking at the parking, um, they need to provide parking if and when the lot is reconstructed. So you actually only need to provide twenty-five percent of the landscaping requirements during a parking lot reconstruction. There's a section of the ordinance that talks about parking lot reconstructions. And with regards to like street frontage and street frontage landscaping, um, again, if they're not changing the configuration to the exterior of the building, they would not have to add any additional street frontage landscaping and/or building foundation landscaping. If they were doing an addition, then yes, they would have to add building foundation landscaping to that area that has been has been expanded with the addition. So in this case, from a code standpoint, we've identified all the code requirements that shall be met within the code and/or have addressed them via conditions placed upon the approval.
Got a question, Kyle. For, um, I'm just not fond of these six parking space right in front of the building. As would that, if someone with a larger vehicle were to park there, would it be obstructing the right-of-way of pedestrians using that? And wouldn't that have something to do with like a fire hazard code? If their cars were parked there, how would they get out?
So that was also concerning to us. And if you see um, page fifty-one, I don't believe they are showing, on that plan, they are showing the parking stalls on page fifty-one of fifty-three because we we identified that same concern, more so with a parking lot reconstruction project, uh, that those parallel stalls would not be accessible. And you're right, that there there could be issues with regards to fire. Um, I'm not so concerned with that because it it's abutting two or three public rights of way with regards to Grand Avenue and the alleyway. Um, but I think it's, I think it's of concern and that's why we had asked that they pursue another mechanism to have some additional parking stalls in the event that that non-conforming asphalt area is removed. And the way they've done that is approached the school district to ask for three stalls.
Any other questions or comments? Ben, anything?
No, nothing on the, it seems like we we put a lot of stipulation into this project. Um, whereas like even just the previous one, we have a few that we're looking to, um, you know, gain compliance on. This one, this one feels like we have a lot more. Um, I don't want to say restrictions, but we have a lot more for this project to be successful for the applicant, um, due to the codes and and everything involved with the project.
Go ahead, Susan.
I would just note note two other things. And one is, I think, um, on a thoroughfare, um, you need to have a fifty-foot setback before you can have a curb cut on Fifteenth Avenue. So there would be no um, ability for those cars to maneuver off that site if you were to allow them to park in front of the property. The other thing that kind of concerns me is the fact that it's a block from a school and essentially what that asphalt in the public right-of-way um, deters is walking along that street on that side of the street. And for that reason, that's just one more um, difficulty with regard to seeing any of the fronts of that building as a parking area.
Any other questions or comments?
I think just as if the applicant understands the, what they're getting into with the parking lot. You know, it's, it is what it is right now and they understand that in the future if it changes, they'd be responsible for that. But I think we have to go on what it is now. Um, see, there is no no sidewalk on, there's only one or two houses of sidewalk on Sixteenth Avenue there. The other side is a full width of sidewalk. Um, I think pedestrians could walk on the other side.
Yeah, unfortunately, um, the applicant is not on anymore. He was on the call earlier. It's possible I could I could try to get him back on. Um, we did relay this to the individual. Uh, we relayed to him several other things, uh, like requirements from a building code standpoint when you have two uses, the separation required and sprinklers and things of that nature. And I'm not, I'm not sure that he's dived into the, um, you know, the specific uh, building code requirements, but he has indicated that he will be doing that and he's interested in pursuing this and that with the school district allowing him to have three parking stalls in that lot, uh, I think that's been enough for him to to move forward with the project because you're right, Susan, that if and when the parking lot is reconstructed, engineering will probably require curb along that area on the the north side of the property. They would not permit that driveway to remain that close to the intersection and uh, probably would not permit there to be any asphalt there. They'd likely require a sidewalk and a boulevard to extend through that area, which again is why I think they're they're, they've shown on page fifty-one of fifty-three the stalls off the alleyway as well as the the leased stalls.
Go ahead, Susan.
Well, a question, Kyle, is, you know, a a simple option is to reduce the number of units in the the building and thereby reduce the number of parking stalls required and to meet the square footage for a a single unit. Obviously, anyone who does a project like this wants to maximize their their profit. But nonetheless, I'm not sure that it's a good practice when we've been trying for the last, I don't even know, three decades to um, bring West Grand Avenue into some sort of conformity to take a step backwards and to make this many exceptions to code in order to accommodate maximizing the rent.
All right, I I understand that. I I appreciate that. I think, right, the the code permits mixed use as a conditional use. The code permits shared parking as an option within five hundred feet of the uh, of the property. So we've identified all this to the applicant and they've they've continued to pursue it. Um, and, you know, at the end of the day, if plan commission doesn't feel like this is fitting for the property, this is fitting for the neighborhood, um, you can ultimately require denial. I think if that's the case, obviously citing reasoning to it will be beneficial. Um, I think, again, it's um, it's a very unique property, right? I don't, I don't think you're going to see a restaurant or even retail operate in there as it did in the past just given the zoning code restrictions primarily related to parking and access. Um, so if, you know, other than a demolished building, I think this is, and even even thereafter with the residential home to the east, um, this is a, an appropriate adaptive reuse. So I think that's primarily why we're recommending approval. But again, if if plan commission thinks otherwise, you can certainly move accordingly.
I think we, um, having someone that wants to come into the city and invest money into housing and I don't know if it's our place to say how much square footage things are, you know, if it all, you know, I have faith in Kyle's department that they went through everything and, you know, as, um, building codes, that will be followed. Um, but the only thing that we're changing here is the the parking stalls and, you know, maybe the times for the delivery. Um, but I would get things rolling, make a motion to accept the Plan 21-1176 as presented with the staff recommendations.
Thank you. We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ryan. Is there any further discussion, questions, comments?
Kyle, was there any conversation or interest with the applicant of potentially rezoning?
No, there was not. And I don't believe the comprehensive plan indicates for this property to change from commercial to a residential designation. So again, I think a rezoning would be more difficult. A majority of West Grand Avenue is called out to exist as commercial or mixed-use. Um, and again, within the B-two district, mixed-use housing is permitted via conditional use permit. Um, so that's what they've pursued because I think it was the easier option for them.
I see. It just, it it would be advantageous to eliminate the need for the office to to gain a little more square footage, you know?
I thought that would be a a deterrent initially in conversations, but they've included it. And, you know, they've got to have a separate bathroom and mechanicals for that area and they've all included it on the plan they submitted to us. Uh, they'll need to include it on the building permit application and the final building plans as well, including the other requirements such as sprinklers and, um, it might actually have to go to the state given the amount of plumbing fixtures that they have in the facility. So there's certainly a lot involved. Um, and know that, uh, you know, the granting of the conditional use permit, if it's granted tonight and subsequently by council, doesn't hold them to the project, right? They could still, if they determine at some point that they wanted to walk away from it, they they could do so.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments? I guess seeing none, I guess we have a motion and a second to approve with the conditions outlined. I guess all in favor say aye.
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 Anybody oppose? So that motion carried. And we are on to item six, which is adjournment.
Make a motion to adjourn.
We have a motion by Eric, seconded by Lee, to adjourn. All in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.